I'll call this meeting of Lima City Council to order. We'll begin tonight's meeting with the invocation by Councilor Adams, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord, we come to you tonight asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussions, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of our community. Fill us with your grace, Lord, as we make decisions that affect the citizens of Lima, and continue to remind us all that we do here tonight. All that we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth and to serve. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
This evening, we have some students from Bath High School, Nate Stonehill, Jacob McKissick, Haley O'Donnell, and Ashley Wobin, and Chase Clark. They're here for one of their government classes. We'll ask you to start us off on the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Mr. Gordon.
Here.
Mr. McLean.
Here.
Mr. Lowe.
Here.
Mr. Tevin.
Here.
Ms. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Glenn.
Mrs. Miles.
Here.
And Mr. Nixon.
Here.
Under the consent calendar, Mr. President. Mr. Tevin.
I move that item A of the consent calendar be received, filed, and approved, and item B be received and filed.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive, file, and approve item A, and to receive and file item B. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number one.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place tax assessments.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that communication number one be received, filed, and legislations on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number two.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to apply for the U.S. EPA Brownfield Grant.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that communication number two be received and filed and legislations on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number three.
From the Deputy Director of Utilities regarding legislation to advertise and purchase vehicles.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that communication number three be received and filed.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Communication number four.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation for the dedication of Rite of Way.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number four be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number five.
From the Director of Public Works requesting legislation for revisions of alley resurfacing program.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number five be received and filed, and that the law director be authorized to prepare the necessary legislation to comply with the request.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number five, and to authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
At this time, could Mr. Howard Ostrow come forward and explain this program for those at home, so they can get a better understanding, please?
Mr. President. Mr. Ostrow.
For some years now, the city has offered participation in alley resurfacing by way of paying the labor cost of resurfacing an alley if an owner or collectively a series of owners pick up the cost of materials. This policy's been in place for a long time. In the last year, we've had a couple of requests from particularly business owners who have asked us if they can solicit quotes on their own and have a contractor of their choice resurface an alley. And they do this in conjunction for a couple of reasons. One, they might be doing this in conjunction of improvement of private property that they own that abuts an alley and want to do their parking lot as well as the alley at the same time. And sometimes they do it for expediency. Inasmuch as we want to help, we typically wait until there's two, three, or four alleys and then package those together and put those out for solicitation of bids where a business owner may want to make an improvement very quickly. So what we have done is structured two methods. One, the traditional method where a property owner would call the engineering department, say, "We're interested in having our alley paved." We would prepare an estimate, present that to the affected owners. The owners could then elect to ask the engineer's office to proceed with alley resurfacing, and then they would all receive bills for the materials at the end. In the second method that we are suggesting, an interested party would call the engineer's office, ask if they can solicit bids for alley resurfacing. The engineer would then review the alley, let them proceed, and then upon receipt of those quotes, would go out and compare those quotes with the work that is needed to that alley, have a conversation with the owner and the contractor, and then they would provide authorization to proceed to the property owner. The property owner would proceed to contract, have the work done, present us invoices, and then the engineering office would inspect the work, and upon completion and satisfaction of the engineer, would then authorize payment up to one-half a percent of the material and labor. So this is a way to keep our alleys maintained. Again, it's been a longstanding policy that the cost is shared for paved alleys, but this is another method that would be expedient in getting work done. One more comment about alleys. As I've talked, this is about improved alleys, paved alleys. Gravel alleys, the city will still carry on with its traditional program of going through and grading all of the alleys and dressing them as needed. That is part of our street division's annual work product. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ostrow, before you step away, I just want to clarify, maybe you misspoke. You said that under method two, the city would, I thought you said, cover one-half a percent.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Cover one-half of the cost.
One-half of cost. If I said so, I, I thank you for the clarification.
It's fine, I just wanted to make sure.
I wrote that down. No, that's the one-half of the cost of labor and materials. So whatever it costs, we would go up to one-half of that cost.
Okay.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. Is there any further questions on this? No. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number six.
From the Auditor regarding the contract labor report.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Miles.
I move that communication number six be received and filed.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number six. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number seven.
From the Auditor regarding expiration of the Civil Service Board member, December 31st, 2014.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Miles.
I move that communication number seven be received and filed.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number seven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number eight.
From the Auditor requesting permission for the mayor to enter into an agreement with Sperry On.
Mr. President. Mr. Tevin. I move that communication number eight be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number eight. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Communication number nine.
From the Auditor requesting approval of post-issuance compliance policy and procedures document.
Mr. President. Mr. Tevin. I move that communication number nine be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number nine. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 10.
From the Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding new permit for Jack Lux Ventures at 139 East Pearl Street.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
I move that communication number 11, I mean, excuse me, number 10 be received and filed, and clerk authorized to file with no objections to the Ohio Division of Liquor Control.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number 10, to authorize the clerk to notify the Ohio Division of Liquor Control of no objection. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 11.
From the Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding new permit for Joey's On-the-Go Drive-Thru at 998 Bell Mountain Avenue.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number 11 be received and filed, and the clerk authorized to file with no objections with the Ohio Division of Liquor Control.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number 11, and to authorize the clerk to notify the Ohio Division of Liquor Control of no objections. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 12.
From the Law Director regarding legislation to file an appropriation action.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number 12 be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number 12. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication, sorry, petition number one.
This is a row vacation, lawyer's street between Flanders Avenue and Finley Road. Petition filed by Mike Flynn on behalf of Amazing Clark and R.K. DJ Patrol.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
I'd like to make a motion that the petition be received and filed, and the law director prepare the necessary legislation, and that the clerk cause publication of the legal ad and notify budding property owners of the public hearing.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file the petition and authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation and to authorize the clerk to cause publication of the public hearing. What's the date on the public hearing?
December 21st, 2014.
For December 21st at 7:00 PM.
Yes, sir.
On 2014.
Yes.
Excuse me.
I did pick the 21st.
Okay, the 22nd. We're gonna do it on Monday night during our regular meeting instead of on Sunday night. Yeah, December 22nd. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Reports of officials, Major Cortez, the Lima Police Department Annual Report.
Thank you, Mr. President. I pass out the reports. Everyone should have a copy in front. And those reports are also listed on our website starting tomorrow and Facebook. This report is made possible through a combined effort involving administrative services with input from all supervisors, especially teams in the Lima Police Department. The accomplishments listed in the report took place with limited resources, both in dollars and in manpower. We had four retirements in 2013 that contributed to our manpower. That was Major Swager, Detective Nolan, Patrolman Hamel, and Becky De Vilbes. However, also in 2013, we had the ability to hire four new officers and one corrections officer. Even though we were able to maintain our workforce, we need to keep in mind that it takes about 20 weeks for a new recruit to be placed out on his or her own, and that's only after the academy, if they need to go to the academy, or after a lengthy hiring process. So in reality, we're looking at a process that can be up to a year before we have those officers on the road to replace the officers that retired. Despite these limited resources and challenges, the men and women in the Lima Police Department answered over 43,000 calls for service in 2013. Even though that does sound high, it's still a decrease of over 1,600 calls for service over 2012. Of those calls, as outlined in the chief's letter, the number of Uniform Crime Report, or UCR Part I Crimes, for 2013 also showed a downward trend, which is good news. Those crimes include homicide, rape, robbery, assault, aggravated assault, burglary, arson, and various theft offenses. The total number for 2013 of those crimes was 3,455 compared to 3,846 in 2012. That was a decrease of 391, or almost 9 percent. That's a lot of people that didn't get victimized in 2013. Also, going back to 2008, we have experienced a reduction of over 28 percent in that area, which is definitely a trend we want to keep going in. In this report, you'll see that the patrol shifts continue their efforts to provide members of this community the professional police services that they deserve and come to expect from us. From the individual shift reports, you'll see some of the efforts by our officers. You will also read some success stories, just to give you small examples of what these officers and dispatchers go through on a daily basis. It is for that reason that the Lima Police Department is committed to continual training and professional development of all our personnel. In February of 2013, as we do every year, we conducted a two-week in-house training course for all of our officers, covering a variety of topics, which include, but are not limited to, search and seizure, law review, CPR, protecting our children, supervisor training. We also conducted a 40-hour in-house bike training school, which is very physical and demanding. Also in 2013, we had the privilege to partner with the Attorney General's Office through the OPADA Mobile Academy, and they brought in two realistic simulators. One was a driving simulator, and one was a shooting simulator. The driving simulator had various scenarios in it to help improve the officer's driving skills, and also had some pursuit simulation in there as well. This was brought in in a covered trailer. They got to sit in a real police car seat by the front, had cameras all the way around them, and it was very successful for us. The firearm simulator was conducted at our training facility, and it was also a very realistic simulator. Actually, without actually experiencing it in real life, that's about as close as you're gonna get. The firearm simulator officers offers realistic scenarios that put the officers through a shoot-or-don't-shoot situation. If the officer makes the right choice, he is advised. If the officer doesn't make the right choice or hesitates too long, we take the time out to explain what the better choice should have been. This was spread over three days of training. Forty-six officers received a total of two hours hands-on training, both on simulators, on both simulators. Through the partnership, the state provided three structures for three days. The cost of the equipment was over a million dollars. So this was all provided at no charge to the city or Lima Police Department. Some of the highlights that I talked about, and I think that the reason we were successful is a direct result of our training, is Officer Miracle, on July 8th, 2013, was on an unrelated call when a woman came running down the street pleading for help. She was, he was advised that just down the road was another lady holding a lifeless baby in her hands. Officer Miracle rushed to that location and found a baby who was lifeless and blue in color. He started to perform CPR on that baby. That baby came back just to stop breathing again. He continued his CPR, and the baby, color started coming back. He opened his eyes, and he started breathing. And, you know, that's through that training that we offer, and he's a hero for that. And I believe, his mom, the child's mom believes that that was a blue angel coming to her rescue when nobody else was there at that time. Also, Officer Gillespie, who was responding out the front door of the Lima Police Department because somebody ran inside and asked for assistance, not knowing what it was. Unfortunately, as soon as he got to the front door, he was ambushed by a man yielding a screwdriver. He was pinned against the Lima Police Department, and in defense of his life, he had to take the correct action to save himself. However, he was still stabbed in the head. Officer Gillespie survived those injuries, as well as the assailant, but that, too, is a credit to his training, and that's why we train every day. And lastly, as an example, one of our third shift officers was on Route 88, and he detected an odor of marijuana, and he also had an informant who told him that there might be some marijuana down the road. And through his professionalism and his good police work, he was able to obtain a search warrant for that resident after detecting the smell of marijuana and recovered over 65 pounds of marijuana. Can you imagine if that hit our streets? I credit all of those to good training, consistent training by the Lima Police Department. Moving on to investigative services. In 2013, they were assigned 886 felony cases, an increase of over 45. Unfortunately, included in those cases were three homicides. And they did receive additional information from a 2009 homicide case, which they worked on and solved. So they worked four homicides in that year. The juvenile officers, which is only one, as we were going through a replacement period, worked on 119 felony cases. Those cases don't go away when you go home. They're always waiting for you when you come back to the office. Our property officers entered over 4,169 pieces of property into our system. Our crime task force, which is tasked with doing the drug work in our city, investigated almost 600 cases, served 444 search warrants, confiscated 41 firearms, 240 grams of heroin, 35 pounds of marijuana, 10 grams of meth, over 1,300 pharmaceutical pills, and recovered over $72,000 in cash. Could you imagine if that $72,000 was turned into drugs and put on our streets? What huge impact that would have had, negative impact on us. Safety City started its 35th year of partnership with the Lima Police Department. In 2013, we served over 5,000 children through field trips, with 129 school classes, the summer academy school events, community safe presentations, and Rad Kids. Safety City trick-or-treat also recorded over 6,900 kids that day. I think we did about 10,000 this year. It continues to grow. And that's thanks to the efforts of Dave Astana, who retired, and our new officer, Matt Douglas. And the renovation is still underway. And I apologize, this ticks along, but I'm about finished. The last statement I want to make is I just want to read to you the Lima Police Department mission statement, because I think it's important. I think that everything we do is based on this mission statement. Lima Police Department is committed to excellence. Our mission is to work in partnership with the community to improve the quality of life by creatively solving problems related to crime, the fear of crime, and neighborhood decay, and to safeguard the constitutional rights of all. We are committed to this, and all our officers are committed to this, and that's why we do what we do. Thank you.
Mr. President. Mr. Lowe.
Major Cortez. Page 17. The only reason I'm asking this is because my ward encompasses a lot of area from Lincoln Park to Jamerson Avenue to Murphy Street to Allen. I got a huge area, and a lot of those are after our places, bars. I would like to know if it's possible, because I'm looking at, it has me at 28.14 percent of the calls that went out. Is there any way that you can show me a different pie, the percentage of what was residential, or I should say, non liquor holding establishment calls?
Sure. And I'm sorry I didn't mention that, but to try to put every graph in there would be...
Well, I'm saying, my ward.
Your ward.
I have a lot.
So I am offering that to every council member, that if you want anything specific, I'll be more than happy to work it up and make sure it gets delivered to you within the next week.
Thank you so much.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
Thank you. Following Counselor Lowe, because I have concerns with page 17 as well, but also page 19. You've got the ward boundaries.
Yes.
Okay? It's not up to date. It's of the, and it even shows the eighth ward in here. So I'm a little concerned if we're using this map to how it may affect these charts.
That was an error that I didn't catch, but we are not using that map. We're well aware of the ward boundaries and the new wards. And in reviewing that, I should have caught that.
I didn't hear mention the target policing, pinpoint, excuse me, pinpoint police.
Where, I just wanted to limit the time that I was up here, because I can talk all day. But I'm proud of the Police Department and the work we do, so if you get me going, I can go all day. But we are still continuing the pinpoint policing. We have monthly meetings with our dependents, comp stat meetings, and through those meetings, through the officers letting us know what's going on in their beats, through the computer stats that we pull up, we are able to determine where we send our resources to. So we still continue to do our pinpoint policing exactly where we've been doing them in the past.
And some of that pinpoint is the communication you have with the public and the residents and neighborhood associations.
Absolutely.
And the meetings you have with the neighborhood representatives on a monthly basis.
Yes.
So, you know, that's a big concern.
It's important, and it's part of our overall strategy.
Okay.
And we will continue to do that, because we know it works.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. President. Mr. Tevin. Major Cortez, thank you very much for the report. This is great information for us to share with our constituents, so they understand that the efforts, I mean, they will see on, you know, in the news or in the newspaper as things are happening throughout the year, but to have it summarized in this nature really, really is helpful. It is helpful to the neighborhood associations. I really personally enjoy your use of social media and the information that is sent out. And you don't have to apologize for taking too much time talking to us. Your passion shows through. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
Major Cortez, I also appreciate everything that Tom said, that I really appreciate your hard work of putting these little stories in here.
Thank you.
These stories mean a lot to me, and I hope it's to the patrolmen that are out there to understand that we really thank them more than what they ever get things from us. These things that they do for us are almost like natural things that they do every day. They don't feel like heroes, and they are.
Yeah, I agree.
And we do appreciate them more than what they know, and I hope you take that back to your fellow men and tell them that we really do appreciate their work. They're very hard work.
And women, fellow men and women.
Women. Yeah, I'm sorry. Anyway. Thank you. I'll make sure they know about this.
Thank you, Major. Ordinances.
If we receive and file the report, we ought to.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to receive and file the LPD Annual Report.
Second.
Motion the second is to receive and file the Lima Police Department Annual Report. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Ordinance 25014.
Loving Special Assessments for Property Maintenance Code Charges on Premises in the City of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that ordinance 25014 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 25014 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Mrs. Miles. Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin.
Yes. Ordinance 25014 has been passed on its first reading by a seven-to-zero vote. Ordinance 25114.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Lima Allen County Convention Authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Lima County Convention and Visitors Bureau using funds from the hotel motel tax.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Miles.
I move that ordinance two fifty-one-fourteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance two fifty-one-fourteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Mrs. Miles. Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin.
Yes. Ordinance two fifty-one-fourteen has been passed on its first reading by a seven-to-zero vote. Ordinance two fifty-two-fourteen.
Authorizing the mayor to apply for, accept, and administer funds from the U.S. EPA Brownfield Coalition Assessment Grant Program in contract with Hall &amp; Associates.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that ordinance two fifty-two-fourteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance two fifty-two-fourteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Mrs. Miles. Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin.
Yes. Ordinance two fifty-two-fourteen has been passed on its first reading by a seven-to-zero vote. Ordinance two fifty-three-fourteen.
Enacting section two twenty-eight point oh eight of codified ordinances of Lima to adopt certain written post issuance compliance procedures relating to the city's outstanding and future tax exempt obligations.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that ordinance two fifty-three-fourteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance two fifty-three-fourteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Mrs. Miles. Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin.
Yes. Ordinance two fifty-three-fourteen has been passed on its first reading by a seven-to-zero vote. Ordinance two fifty-four-fourteen.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Spieriani.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that ordinance two fifty-four-fourteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance two fifty-four-fourteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Mrs. Miles. Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
No.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
No.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes. Ordinance two fifty-four-fourteen will go on second reading as it failed to receive the required two-thirds affirmative vote. Ordinance two fifty-five-fourteen.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with URS Engineers.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that ordinance two fifty-five-fourteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance two fifty-five-fourteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Mrs. Miles. Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin.
Yes. Ordinance two fifty-five-fourteen has been passed on its first reading by a seven-to-zero vote. Ordinance two fifty-six-fourteen.
Authorizing the auditor to make payment to the State of Ohio Environmental Protection Agency.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that ordinance two fifty-six-fourteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance two fifty-six-fourteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Mrs. Miles. Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin.
Yes. Ordinance two fifty-six-fourteen has been passed on its first reading by a seven-to-zero vote. Ordinance two fifty-seven-fourteen.
Authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids and enter to contract to purchase vehicles for the Utilities Department.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that ordinance two fifty-seven-fourteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance two fifty-seven-fourteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Mrs. Miles. Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
No.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes. Ordinance two fifty-seven-fourteen has been passed on its first reading by a six-to-one vote. Ordinance two fifty-eight-fourteen.
Amending ordinance ninety-six-fourteen.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance two fifty-eight-fourteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance two fifty-eight-fourteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Mrs. Miles. Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin.
Yes. Ordinance two fifty-eight-fourteen has been passed on its first reading by a seven-to-zero vote. Ordinance two fifty-nine-fourteen.
Dedicated and accepting additional right-of-way for public use to the Medcalf Street between Elm Street and North Street.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance two fifty-nine-fourteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance two fifty-nine-fourteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Mrs. Miles. Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin.
Yes. Ordinance two fifty-nine-fourteen has been passed on its first reading by a seven-to-zero vote. Ordinance two sixty-fourteen.
Declaring the necessity and intent to file an appropriation action to appropriate a fee simple interest and a temporary interest in certain real property owned by H&amp;H Takar LLC for the all Lima Kibbe Street project and authorizing the law director to file an appropriation petition therefor.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance two sixty-fourteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance two sixty-fourteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Mrs. Miles. Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin.
Yes. Ordinance two sixty-fourteen has been passed on its first reading by a seven-to-zero vote. Selenius Business, Ms. Adams.
Thank you, Mr. President. Few items this evening, probably be the first of many, just a reminder to vote tomorrow. Also, remember, since we won't be meeting until after, November the eleventh is Veterans' Day. Thank a veteran and support area activities honoring those veterans. I'd like to call a Public Works meeting next Monday, November tenth, at five P.M. Concerns, a claim that was referred to the committee, and the claim number is three-four-eight-five-five-nine. And also, I was seeing some other notes here. I would like to add to the agenda on the committee to look at the lease that was already in the committee, leasing of city buildings. We've gotten some communication from Lacknip, and just to address it in a formal meeting, so we'll take it from there. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Mrs. Miles.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have one thing here. The Westgate Neighborhood Association meeting November sixteenth at six-thirty P.M., and the speaker will be Mar Jean Warrens. She is over the drug court, she's a drug court probation officer with juvenile court. Again, November sixteen at six-thirty P.M. at Chamberlain Huckery. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Miles. Mr. Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, too, want to say that this annual report was very impressive, but I was, this is the second time I've been impressed with our police department here recently. In my own neighborhood, I looked across the street and seen the chief out there on a call with his officers, and I was very impressed with that. So, you know, I want to say to you and all of the folks on the LPD that you're appreciated in First Ward as well, and I was impressed by seeing you out there. Also, speaking of the lease, on behalf of the Lima Warriors, I wanted to thank the city for the annual lease renewal for Fire Station Five. The Warriors have been able to meet before games, have annual garage sales, feed the homeless, and been able to have several events, and we are also able to make several improvements to the building, and we're thankful for the use of the building, so I wanted to thank everyone on behalf of the Warriors. Also, I wanted to make mention of Mr. Glenn's father is in the hospital, and hopefully everybody will keep the Glenn family and their prayers. I will be praying for them tonight. He's in ICU, and so hopefully we can, you know, keep that in mind as we go on our way tonight. And the last thing, and like I always say, remind people to be good to each other. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Mr. McLean.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple items. First, I want to remind people to get their leaves raked out to not on the street, but near the street, on the grass. So, that leaf pickup will start, I believe, on the tenth, which is coming up, so get your leaves out to the street, just don't put them on the streets, okay? And secondly, I want to emphasize the fact that, you hear this on the news, we keep hearing the vote, vote, vote. If forty percent of us are the only ones that's voting, we're going to continue to have the same thing that we have now. So, what I'm asking you to do is please contact whoever's on your block, whoever. Get them to go out and vote. Make them aware of the issues and ask them to vote, because if we continue the decline that we have as far as voters going out and voting, we're not getting the choices. So, please go out and vote tomorrow. Make your voice count, and the only way to do that is to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Mr. Lo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilman McLean took my voting speech away from me. I want to kind of piggyback off of what Councilman Gordon said. Mr. Glenn's father is doing very bad. Again, I want to ask that you not only put his family in prayer, but especially his wife, Ms. Ruthie Glenn, and their children. He is there now. He's actually been there about four days, nonstop. So, he's warned, too, mentally and physically, but please pray for them.